...order from recess. So we've already adopted the agenda and we've already pledged allegiance. I see on here is public comment, but we already had public comment. And I think where we left off is with these changes to the definitions of the tourist homes or the transient lodging. One thing I don't see here, Gary, I got your stuff, but is this it?
Yeah.
Okay, maybe I did see it. Must be under the agenda here. Oh, okay, great. So we've got four members here, so that's a quorum, so let's proceed to business and see if we can make some progress. Gary, do you want to describe what you did here?
Sure.
And we'll start from there.
Sure. Again, this, I began with the definitions that had been distributed over the last couple of meetings.
Everybody got it?
Um, page of it here. And I know there's been some questions about how much people have had a time to focus on this, but our last meeting, I took the understanding that there was a consensus that the three categories that I had previously described really weren't sufficient and we should add a fourth that's sort of between bed and breakfast and hotel in intensity, a country inn. So with an eye toward the current definition of country inn, which is, you know, between a bed, you know, more than 10 but less than 40 guests, I added a definition of country inn and kind of maintained the rest of the structure. So I know there's been some other stuff. Rick shared some concepts about some stuff. I know Brian, you shared some definitions from other sections. I did not look at those. Frankly, I didn't have a ton of time. I just wanted to do what I said I would do at the last meeting, which was to add a fourth category. And just to remind folks, the vision of these things is that they are a comprehensive set to cover all of the various types of transient lodging, with transient lodging being any kind of rental of an overnight accommodation for less, for fewer than 30 days. And so I didn't go through and do all the markup, but presumably these would either, we would either delete the other transient lodging related sections, or we would refer each of them to this. I hadn't gotten that far in the thinking in terms of how to integrate this, but that's what I did with respect to the actual definitions.
Okay, thank you. And thanks for doing it. Well, Michelle has incorporated or taken a stab at incorporating that, and so it's on page 35 if everybody's, I don't know if everybody has a hard copy of the amended.
Yes.
Well, it starts on 34, I guess.
And one thing about that that I-
It should be transient, not transit. I E N T. Your spell check must have done that, I'm sure.
Uh, one thing, let's see, let me take a look at that again. Did you say page 34?
That's what it says at the bottom, the page on the bottom. I don't know how that's numbered, but online it's on 34. And the, well, tourist home is crossed out on 34, and transient housing starts on 35.
Ah, okay. That's, all right, that's not actually what it looks like online for some reason. That's a little odd, but um-
There it is, it's up on the board.
Yeah, so one thing about this, it, I didn't, it does not appear to capture the, my proposed definition of tourist home, which is, should also be under the heading of transient housing, so, right, anyway, I'm not sure if that was-
I think it should be, yeah, I think that just got amended. So, well, let's go down each one. With hotel or motel, I mean, the trouble that I've got with what, so it's sort of in reverse order, because, sorry, that's my fault. I told Michelle to go from the biggest one to the smallest one, and you have it, I think, the other way around.
The idea being from the least intensive to the most, because that's sort of how they stack.
So, let's just start with hotel motel. The trouble with your definition is the 40 is, does not, I mean, that's how this all started, to get away from the, from the 12 number that was in the, that's in the ordinance now. Because that doesn't jive with the building code. Once you go over 10 people, they, the building code calls that a hotel, regardless of what you call it. And so does this 12 VAC 43110. So, so that's one, I mean, any, what about, I mean, look, what about a motel? A typical motel does not usually have, necessarily have 20 rooms for 40 people. That's pretty big.
Where are you referring to, 40 people?
In what Gary's handout, the one page handout.
Not, not on the screen, not what-
Not what's on the screen, no.
So, based on the cutoff of the current definition of country inn, if you're, you know, I think we discussed at some length the fact that there's no getting around the building code definition of a hotel starting at 10, and we either totally give up on further distinctions, or we recognize that our definitions have got to be more granular and um-
What do you mean by granular?
Well, more nuanced than 10 or more, or 10 or fewer. And so, you know, I think our choices there are either, we don't try to define hotel because then we're not in direct conflict with the definition that's different in the state code, which would be one option, which would be fine with me. We could kind of define it as something else, and then hotel would be a term that's uniquely defined in the building code. But we still need, I think, for all the reasons we've been discussing, our various, you know, subcategories of these things, so.
I agree with that. And the reason, I mean, I agree with that as far as you went, because if you go to the chart, which I'm flipping through here trying to find it, where these are listed, resident and residential, no, all right?
They're under-
Michelle, you're the zoning administrator. Are you supposed to know all this? I do it by my computer, and when I have the hard copy, I really have a hard time finding things. Here we go, it's on page 53, or at least some of them. Country inn, less than five acres, greater than five acres. Conference center, I don't see hotel.
Hotel's probably under commercial.
So while we're on that page, though, one of the things we said, what did, or we talked about, I don't know that we resolved it, especially in the context of one of the applications that came up recently, what is five, less or more than five acres used? What does that mean? Used? What does used mean? I mean, it doesn't, it obviously doesn't mean the footprint of the, of the facility.
Yeah, to me, it's a, it's just an unnecessary appendage of argument, as we saw on the case of Harmony Manor.
Right. But I mean, the reason it's, I guess, significant is because if it's less than five acres used, whatever that means, it goes, it's a special use permit that goes to the BZA. If it's greater than five acres used, it goes to the Board of Supervisors. And in terms of the, in terms of the impact of it on the neighborhood and all the other various zoning considerations, water use, noise, and so forth, whether they use them five acres or seven acres is irrelevant. It's really, I think, should be based on how many people, and how much traffic it's going to generate. I mean, the one that we're public hearing on, for example, I mean, they're, I guess they're using all 460-some acres of it.
And if it-
But the issues don't have anything to do with how much, how many acres they're using. It has to do with how many people are going to be there. So it seems to me like we ought to, while we're at it, we ought to fix that and get rid of the acreage used and just stick to the number of people. And the other thing about that's a difference is, when you get into your definitions, and if we can ever find it, Michelle, have you found out where hotel is? Help me out. Page hotels on, maybe you can.
Definition of hotel?
No, in the chart.
It's on page 55.
Oh, under what?
There's four on that, boarding house and a motel.
Where? 55? Under commercial retail business use? I don't see it.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, tourist home, I see, great. Boarding house, motel, huddle. Okay, so the difference is, between a motel and a hotel, motel hotel and a country inn is you can have a country inn by special use or special exception permit in a conservation or agriculture zone, whereas hotels are only permitted in commercial general, special use permit in industrial, why that is, I don't know, and highway commercial. It's permitted by right. So it seems to me that that's, that's the problem. I mean, and if you start making definitions and talking about how much they use, somebody can come in and say, instead of calling it a hotel motel, they just call it a country inn. And then they can do what they want to do, unless we further define what used means, or we somehow, I mean, I frankly think maybe they ought to be combined.
So I didn't say this explicitly, but I totally agree. I think that not only is the used delimiter meaningless, because the applicant can choose, as long as the parcel's at least five acres, they can tell us whatever they wanted about what they're using and what they're not using. To me, all of these subsequent categorizations probably should be eliminated, and we could deal with the, those kinds of parcel limitations in the additional standards section, and not try to carve everything out by the uses and the, and the categories. The only reason I could see having the different acreages as different lines on the table is if we were going to have them different in the table, and I don't see why they, they would be, especially if they're redefined as I've proposed defining them. So I didn't say this explicitly, but the definitions that I'm proposing, I would say these each become one line in the table, and if there's additional constraints or concerns or restrictions, we articulate those in the additional standards section.
And then you've got conference center or resort, which is back on 53, which is also a special exception, and as I recollect, that's, that's greater than 40 people in the definition.
Yeah, I, I think your approach of trying to go from what's there now, which is, I think has problems to, you know, logic, I think we should start with the clean slate, which is kind of what I tried to do.
So what, under your definitions, what would happen to conference center?
Well, conference center is, has, let's, let's look at that. So conference center, I think, also implies certain meeting for uses, not overnight, so.
Well, they've got, I mean, you know, they've got, this is on page nine of the definitions of the whole ordinance. Conference center or resort, a use which provides temporary lodging, meals, entertainment, I read that last time, for more than 40 persons in a rural setting. So if you want to have a hotel, and you can't do it because you're in the ag district or conservation, like right on top of Red Oak Mountain, you just apply for a conference center instead of a hotel. But as far as all the other things, you know, I think that, I mean, look at the one that's pending. I hate to single them out, but it's kind of a good example. They could, they could apply theoretically for that, if they're going to have a conference and discuss sustainable agriculture and things like that.
Well, they would, they would meet the definition, I believe, of country inn as I've proposed it, according to what I recall they're saying, more or less, I don't know. They were a little ambiguous about what they anticipated with respect to meetings and the like, but, but again, I, I agree with you, and I don't know why we're complicating things by creating distinctions without differences, and that's what I've tried to avoid.
Well, I agree with that. So, I don't know, what do you all think? You're awfully quiet down at that end.
I mean, I was just trying to follow this, to be honest. I, I mean, yes, they, this is, this is very confusing to anybody, and the idea of kind of making some sense out of it is, I mean, and I'm following where you're going on it. I don't see, yeah, this convention center has never made any sense, but I don't, I don't know why that's any different from a hotel.
I mean, you know, this goes back to why the whole zoning ordinance really needs to be thoroughly gone over, because we're sort of picked, I don't know, this list of amendments started out as a kind of the really bad things, and then as you get into it, you logically say, well, what about this? And I have to say, I mean, if, if you just look down, which is my favorite thing to do, as some of you who took my little zoning course know, if you just look at some of the uses, I mean, look, look at what is, as the, the controversy that has erupted over this pending thing, and I'm not criticizing the applicant or the people who live in the neighborhood, who apparently mostly oppose it, but that's just a simple sort of country inn, 400 and some acres, they're going to have some kind of minor things with up to, what'd they say, 14 people?
They said 30 for lunches occasionally.
Occasional, okay.
That was the other thing, but again, they were pretty ambiguous on that.
All right, but, so, just imagine if somebody in a conservation zone proposed a conference center or resort. I mean, I, it's, it's kind of mind-boggling to think that that is going to, like, why is that in here? That, there's something that ought to be, I don't know, much more restricted, and I don't see why that, something like that should be on a, allowed at all in a conservation zone.
Well, the other factor there that I can imagine, one of the reasons that I broke it up this way is I think the main issue that we see on these things is the road access. And, and I can see some of these, to me, that is among the major differences in, that I could see in how we, you know, where we, where we consider allowing these things with, again, that, but everything you said, again, I think it doesn't, I mean, we create the definitions, and then people, if we build it, they'll come, right? They'll, they'll look for the definition that allows them to do what they want to do, and that's what they're going to do anyway.
That's what they are doing.
And that's, and so-
It's all, one, one talks about number of people, and another one talks about how many acres you're using, and it's-
Right.
You know, it's, maybe it was deliberately done that way, so, I mean, it's an improvement over the prior ordinance, which I used to say, if you read it from front to back, you got one interpretation, or if you started in the back and went the other way, you got another, and if you started, I mean, there was something in there for everybody. And I think there ought to be, you know, the outdoor events is another example of it.
I think the conference center resort definition just needs to go, because I think the country inn kind of catches up, picks up what's saying there, that, that includes the lodging. The conference center, convention center, I, I see that as, like the Chamber of Commerce in Falkir going to Marriott Ranch, and they're just having one big giant business meeting. No one's staying the night.
Yeah.
You know, and that is definitely a big giant piece of land, and they have a facility to host a bunch of people, and I think that seems to be what this wants to catch, that, like the applicants had the other day, they want to have this 30-person type of meeting. And no one's spending, except for this convention center, no one's spending the night. It's just a big giant facility.
Well, flip over to page 115, because that's one of the things that you mentioned, Gary, but you didn't really capture it, you just did the definition. That's the additional standards for country inns, retreats or lodges.
Lodges.
Well, that's something else yet. Who's, that's not me, is it? Good. It sounds like mine. The minimum, the minimum size requirement, that should be lot size is missing, is 20 acres. Okay? No structure campsite or athletic facility shall be located closer than 10 feet to any lot line. Well, I'm sure that, like the crowd that was here last week would be perfectly calmed down when they read that. It's, it won't be closer than, I don't see it. First of all, if you look at the setbacks, the minimum setback in those two districts is 75 feet, I think, or 100 feet, so what that's doing in there, who knows? Because it was copied from somewhere else, like Fairfax, and nobody really thought much about it. All right, no permit until the applicant has furnished evidence, proposed development meets all applicable state and local health requirements. Well, great. Parking and lot loading areas, swimming pools, tennis courts shall be effectively screened. And that's not from adjoining properties or whatever, who knows? In no case shall the density measured by two-person occupancy units, be they bedrooms, campsites, and so forth and so on, or other equivalencies exceed eight units per 25 acres. And that was added by the board and then amended in 91 and 96. So I really, I don't recall what, what the discussion was that led to, led to that or what it was before. But, okay, so if you go by your definitions, if they have 25, well, they have 25 acres, they could have only eight. So why would they apply for this if they, they could just get a bit, be a bed and breakfast and not have to go through all that? There's PS, there's nothing in here, not one word about the road access, whereas if you look at the bed and breakfast standards, there is a road requirement. That's one of the topics of debate, I suppose, in that category, but this one doesn't have any. And to me, you'd take care of it if you said it's got to be on a primary or secondary paved road. And eliminate a lot of issues.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, I think it's very clear that there's at least three dimensions to this problem. The definition of the uses, the zones where they're allowed in the tables, and then the additional standards. And it's going to be very hard for us to collectively solve all three of those dimensions at once. So the way, the reason that I started on the definitions is that I think we can logically get our heads around what we want to say about overnight accommodations, and then, if we sort of collectively feel we got that right, then we step through where we want to allow those zones and what kind of additional standards we require, and then we go back and look at, is there anything messed up based on what might have been allowed under the previous one? But if we just keep talking about all of these dimensions at once, I don't see us making much progress.
Well, I, I, I really appreciate where you're coming from there, Gary, but it does seem to me that some of these, without understanding like what the acreage limitations are, I mean, that, all these things do seem to sort of fit together, and if we could list them all out with a table showing all the requirements related to country inns and all the requirements related to lodges, and just sort them all out that way, I don't see how you can just do it just based on the definition without looking at-
I think he's talking about for discussing it, like, not, not for, and I have to-
Well, I, I think, well, I take your point, MK, I think you're talking, there's, the reason that we're having this discussion with the scope that it has is because the so-called May Amendments had some revisions to definitions of tourist home. That's what started this. As you point out, Mr. Conick, and frankly, as I've said many times, it's hard to start with that kind of line edit thing rather than a systematic approach. And what I think you're describing, this issue, is that systematic approach. Let's map out all of what's in the current regs now for all these kinds of meeting and transient lodging, and sort of see what we want to do. That is another approach to this that is frankly a little different than that which was initiated by the, the May Amendments. So, again, I, I don't have any problem doing what you're doing, but I think the reason that I am in a different place than you are, MK, is that we sort of started past that.
Well, I guess we have to decide, I mean, I don't think we're going to resolve all those three categories, to me.
Neither. Question, what's the path?
Just change the definitions is, may be worse than-
No, I, so where do we start? To me, what's the path we want to take to getting this resolved?
So maybe we ought to go back to just what's in the, the May, the May Amendments fixed the 12 versus 10, and maybe we ought to just limit it to that, and, and the road standard for, because that, I mean, that's how that got into the list, that the, the road standard was the subject of litigation from Harmony Manor. The judge wrote a letter of opinion, because one of the biggest issues was that the neighbors made, was that despite the planning commission's recommendation that it be denied because of the road, the Board of, who was it? The BZA, for some, because they put some other conditions which are now sort of, which later got violated anyway, and resulted in the revocation of the permit, but nevertheless, they approved it. And the neighbors said, well, look, they obviously violated that standard, and the judge said, well, it, it says it should have it, it doesn't say it must have it, and besides that, look, you were right. See, here comes Rick. Welcome.
My one, is you right?
Okay. We decided everyone thought it was at 7:00 instead of 6:00.
I did.
Well, you were early then.
I know. Well, I was doing good.
Well, you don't know who we are?
I don't know. Not my name, but it's okay.
So, all right, so, you know-
I guess to your-
I think, I think that's what we ought to go back to and, and leave it to a further amendment, or a comprehensive amendment.
So, I agree with that in principle, although I don't think it's quite accurate, because those May Amendments also had owner occupied, non-owner occupied.
We're taking that, we're, I propose to take that-
So we still have to go back to something that doesn't exactly exist.
No, I propose to take that out altogether, because the only reason that was in was because at the time it was drafted, four years ago, the state legislature was going to take the local authority away of regulating the owner occupied and operated ones.
Yeah, I understand, I'm just-
And they didn't do that, so there's no point of making that distinction.
I'm just saying, you say go- I'm just saying, you say go back to those, there's, we can't, there's, there's nothing to go back to. We have, what you're saying is let's just limit it to the minimal fixes that we need to deal with those few things.
Let's just limit it to the definition of bed and breakfast and have it at 10 persons instead of and you, and use the definition that's here. Any building or portion thereof containing sleeping accommodation, not more than 10 persons, who are not members of the family operating establishment, when normally a charge is paid for such accommodation. And left out and meals are served.
Hate to say it, but if, if we're only.
Or if you, I mean, if you wanted to use yours, it's fine. Yours is fine too. Yours has the 10.
Well, I don't think it, I don't think mine, I hadn't really thought through, but I don't think mine, the individual ones make much sense if you don't keep the progression intact. Anyway, that to me is the value of, there may be problems with what I proposed, but the, the value of what I proposed is that it's kind of a, a clear progression of, of uses. So I'm not sure if it works to just pull those out. Maybe it does, but I'd have to think.
I mean, let's just do that and tourist home. Because the problem with tourist home is right now, it, it differentiates itself from, from the other uses by saying it's, it's for a period normally of more than seven days, which is not appropriate. So we need to get that out.
I, so if you're, if you're.
And, and, and then we're, then we're good.
Well, I, I think you're right. If you, the, the least controversial of the things that I've drafted certainly are the tourist home and the bed and breakfast. And to me, those are the ones that have, offer the most improvement and the others are where it gets a little fuzzier. So I'm not, if you're suggesting to keep, to just change those and leave the others.
And leave the country end and the hotel, the hotel has to be changed in that. The only thing about hotel that's there now is that, like what's on page 35. A building or portion, blah, 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 for more than 10 persons in six or more rooms classified as lodging units under the code and so forth. So it's a pretty minimal amendment. What's on page 35? For bed and breakfast and for tourist home, I, I propose to use your, your two definitions on your handout, with the exception I want to talk about now, I'm not comfortable with the events part.
Well, Steve wanted a transient lodging, and they keep in the transient lodging part of it?
No, just tourist home and bed and breakfast.
But, but Steve, if he has it as transient lodging, he would cut that part out.
We're going to leave, we're going to leave that out. The hotel motel is going to be what's there. The bed and breakfast is, is going to be.
Well, i- if you're going to take out the.
I mean, well, well, wait a minute. The original thing, owner occupied and operated on the bed and breakfast. Other than owner, I mean, it's got to be a sort of a, it's any building or portion thereof containing sleeping accommodations for not more than 10 transient occupants in up to a maximum of five rooms classified as lodging units. We've got to have that part in, the reference to the Virginia Administrative Code, for a period of fewer than 30 days, wherein a charge and so forth and so on. That, that's the, that's the definition I would propose to use. And, and get rid of other than owner occupied and, and get rid of, and the owner occupied or not owner occupied, we get rid of that. Leave it at, at the, at what's, at what's on this chart on the second page.
I feel like we could do a little, be a little bit more ambitious than that. If you like, if you are using all that 30-day stuff, rather than repeat it in, in both the definition of a tourist home and in the definition of bed and breakfast where it would need, why not also define transient lodging to capture that general stuff that you just articulated and then.
Well, then we have another category.
We don't have to. We just, it's just something else we defined. It's, it is.
So use your first.
As the CLAT, yes. That to me captures.
All right.
What you're really trying to do. And then if, when we go forward, if we want to further define.
Because yours both use the transient lodging.
Yes.
So how about if we do this? Let's add to your definition on your handout, the word facility. Because you've used facility in both your subdefinitions.
Transient lodging facility?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Use of any building, da-da-da-da-da-da-da. But let's go back to this business of events on tourist homes. I mean, we don't have that in there now at all. And I'm not really too comfortable with it. Because you're, I tell you, you're going to have, I mean, right now, and just tell you my experience and, well, you've got, those of you who've been on the board or the commission, although no one's really here that's been through it very much. The, the biggest, the argument that comes up with the tourist home, which is sort of your argument, well, and Chris Berg used to make this argument, well, if they are making this into a tourist home, it probably generates less sewage and less noise and less traffic and so forth than a single-family residence that's permitted by rights because the people are only there on weekends primarily. And most of the time during the week, it's vacant. All right, if, if that's, so that's sort of the issue and that's usually, and the conditions that have been put on it is typically, besides all the safety things and so forth and so on, is they can only have people there for a certain maximum number of days per month. Like only three weekends or four, only the weekends per month, or only 10 days per month or something like that. And that's been typically how it's been handled. But if, if you now open that use up to events like weddings, where what you sort of have in there like, you know, well, only, only up to 10 people are going to stay there, but it's going to be the bride and groom and the groom and the, and the wedding party. And then there's going to be 100 guests every couple of weekends. The neighbors are, that's, that's a whole different ball of wax.
Okay. So to be clear, for tourist home, the definition says does not accommodate events for more than twice the number of permitted resident guests.
I, I think we ought to.
So, so in fact, this is a prohibition because the way it is now, it's not clear. Right? If you rent a place and you're spending the night, the, the, the regulations are silent on whether you can have 20 of your friends over during the day or not. So with, when it comes to tourist home, what I've added here is the, is a restriction that says you can't have more than, than twice the number of people who can spend the night there, there at all. So that's what tourist home does.
If you're going to do it, I think you ought to, that's, that's a good idea, but I think.
All that's there.
Limitation should be exactly the number of people. Because you know, another thing that you didn't take into account is what about this siligent and all that stuff? You know, everybody's always over. Do they have a health permit and is it going to accommodate it? And do they have enough for four bedrooms or five bedrooms? Because a lot of these places are limited by the, how, what size the drain field was and how many bedrooms it was approved for when it was built. But if you're going to start having regular things like that, you're going to way exceed that. I mean, if you, I mean, some of these things, if you're allowed to have 10 people, you're going to have double the number of people there. That means you got now instead of 10 people, you got 20 people.
Okay. So we're not, so just to be clear, tourist home, what I did actually explicitly doesn't allow that. Does not accommodate events for more than twice the number of permitted resident guests. So that does imply that if you, if you can have 10 people overnight, you can have a few other people there. You know, we can change that number, but the idea is tourist homes do have a restriction on events. Bed and breakfast, which again, we're, we're stepping up in the level of intensity. And I'm thinking here, this is how it has frankly always been by default. The traditional bed and breakfast that you used to see in the brochure and, you know, when we had one and, you know, the, you know, Blue Doll and all these and Phil, you know, they, they had occasional group events, you know? And, and so it was, it was not explicit, but it was sort of like understood. And what I'm trying to do is define that a little bit better for the purpose of the bed and breakfast category.
Well, well, the bed and breakfast, I don't have that big of a problem because they serve meals and all that stuff. And really, I, maybe that is another thing that ought to go into the standards, additional standards. If they have events that should be limited to whatever, instead of trying to put it in with the definition. I, I think.
Well, we, I hear you on that.
And I just.
All right. Well, then you got to reword.
You know, the other side of it that I always bring to the table on Michelle's behalf is.
Can I make a point?
Yeah, go ahead.
In your additional standards under 1766 K, there's a proposed number one in the May amendment.
There's a what? Say that again.
Under 1766 K.
What page is that? Wait. 115 somewhere I saw. It's up there somewhere.
One of the May amendments was to not be the maximum number of adults permitted at any one house, so not exceed twice the number of lodging units.
You put that in there. I did. What do you mean? No, I, I know I'm.
That's been a, again, I don't know where it originated, but that's been floating around for a while. The idea is, it was generally been perceived that it's too restricted to say no one can set foot who isn't, you know, who doesn't have the ability to spend the night.
I agree with that, but I also, the other side of it is how you, how do you enforce any of this stuff?
I mean.
Michelle, it's always on weekends, so how many calls have you gotten, Michelle, that, oh, somebody had too many people at their wedding? Who's going to count them? I mean, who knows? And I think, I, I, I mean, frankly, I think that you're mixing apples and oranges when you try to do that. You ought to say if you're going to have events like weddings, like what about over there in the corner of 231? And then it got withdrawn, but they, they wanted to have weddings.
Different use.
Well, they wanted to have events and it was weddings and the people, nobody was going to stay over. So they applied not for a bed and breakfast, but for a thing for events. Well, if you're going to have events like weddings, then you got to apply for a separate permit for that. And I think to somehow get in on, on the coattails of a bed and breakfast that now you're allowed to have events too, I think that's a mistake or maybe.
So my thought is clearly a wedding or a large event is a different thing. What I was trying to do here is rule it out for tourist homes explicitly for the first time where it hasn't been ruled out before. And for bed and breakfast, say you can do it to, to a small number, a few times a year, just based on the fact that you're a bed and breakfast and it's not that different than what you're doing. That's the logic of what's here, rather than have people trying to navigate both sets of standards. But I hear your point and we could try to break it all out. But I can tell you, most of our traditional bed and breakfasts occasionally do some type of events. And now we've kind of greatly complicated that.
I'd hear from someone else besides me.
Yeah, I came late and I apologize. The, I'm looking at this and I was thinking tourist home, it's for a single party of guests. I can't imagine how many people actually come out here and expect to have a wedding or any, any kind of event at a house where they've rented it for a weekend or, or something.
And they can't. No one's suggesting they can. Nothing here says they can. I don't know why we keep talking about that. We're not allowing that.
Although people do that in other jurisdictions.
Yeah.
They can't, under this, under what we're proposing to do here, they, now we're for the first time clear that you can't do that.
I mean, I could tell you plenty of times, I got up at 3 o'clock in the morning to go fishing and they were still down, down at the other end, still carousing and woke me up. And I said, well, since I'm awake, I might as well leave.
I felt real bad for an owner one time because I don't know who he is, but I was taking some people around looking at property and the guy said, you know, we stayed at a house right over there near Old Rag. And I said, there were 36 of us. I said, 36 of you? He said, yeah, it was like $3,600 and it was only $100 apiece for the weekend. And I'm thinking, that poor guy, Septic Field, probably blew a gasket, you know? But I don't know how you'd overcontrol that, but I don't see why we have to say anything about events. Personally, that, you know, no, just say, no events, you know? If we're going to limit it to.
Or no events unless you get an event permit.
Unless you have a permit for a tourist home. And then a bed and breakfast, I guess since you have an owner there, they could have something. I don't know. I mean.
Well, you don't necessarily have an owner there.
Well, okay, well, then I don't, I don't know why we're, I don't know why we're not, just let, not be a separate thing they apply for.
Well, tourist home, I'm good. Does not accommodate events.
I didn't hear all of Gary's argument on this, so.
I think you ought to put a period after events on tourist home. That's what I meant. That does not accommodate events, period. And bed and breakfast up to four times for, for no more. The May accommodate up to four per year for, it should, didn't you leave out the word no?
Look, the problem with just.
Wait a minute. Bed and breakfast, your last line, you've got for more than two times the number. You meant to say for no more than two times, right?
They cannot.
Right, right, the line above country.
They can have two, and, and there is a need to put, there would be a need to put some kind of limit and we could do it. But going back to your point about the first one, to say no, no events, what are you saying? If 10 people stay there, they can't have a birthday party for their kid? I mean, the whole point is.
That's not an event.
Well, how is it not? They think it's an event. How, the point is, it's, it's not, the reason is, it's getting at this additional, additional set, you know? So you can reword it if you like, but you're unraveling stuff that was logically constructed. And, you know, we can, we can continue as we have for the past three years doing this or we can sort of cut to the chase. But I'm particularly sensitive to the fact that, you know, this is exactly what we've done every year since these things came out. And it's in part because it isn't easy to do surgically because the whole ordinance is messed up.
Well, I agree with that. Not the whole thing, but.
Well, a lot. There are systemic, there are systemic issues that we should be looking at.
And I can see Mr. Conick's point that we could just do a very simple thing to get, you know, what we must get done as we talked about before and then take it, you know, and when we get past this, then do a more systemic analysis of all those together.
And that is what we did before too. And by the time we were done, we, we, we got rid of everything that was substantive and we were left with like six text amendments. And we said, why would we bother going to a public hearing for these six, six text amendments? That, we went through that entire cycle once before. And, and, you know, anyway, I, I don't want to, you know, I, I'm sorry to keep taking the floor. Go ahead.
Well, I, I mean, the, the original intent of this, what was to fix some, some of the glaring problems. And there's no question, in my, I mean, in my mind, what's in front of us and what is proposed to be done with the definition, to be kept to a minimum to fix the most glaring problems with the recognition that hopefully, when the comp plan is finished and it's in our work plan, although we're obviously behind schedule with it, let's get, I mean, let's start working. Oh, it must be settling. See, it comes out. Uh, let's do the, do it when we do the comprehensive review of the zoning ordinance for what you do. Because I don't think I'm going to be here.
I'm fine with that and I don't mean to be overly defensive on these things. I just recognize that it's one thing to just sort of peel away, but someone's got to put pen to paper, as I tried to do, to give us something that's cogent and works. And, you know, we need to come up with a process or, you know, somebody, something to do that. I thought I had it, so I do feel some pressure to try to defend the logic of what I did. But I'm okay with you guys redoing it. It's just that takes us back to step one.
Where?
To step one, I think.
Well, I, I don't, I don't think so. I mean, the, the, look, the commission already voted. I mean, the, the, look, the commission already voted to, and resolved these, most of these. I mean, what's on this chart is what was already basically approved. I'd like to hear somebody make a motion. I mean, well, what do you, well, let's, let's sort, sort this thing out. What, what about the events? I, I say, that gets us into a beyond, I mean, I don't think that's a glaring problem. I mean, I agree with what you're saying, that it ought to be in the conditions, and I, and I also think that, look, when, when, when the commission, when anybody applies for one of these permits, that's a question that ought to be asked. Are you going to have events? And if they say no, then you make it a condition. Okay, we're approving it for three rooms or four rooms or up to five rooms, no more than 10 people, and no events. If they say, well, we might, well, then you have to get into it and fashion some conditions that fit until, and, and frankly, I, I'm not sure that that's a, because now we're trying to, I, I don't disagree with you too much, but I mean, I just think we're trying to sort out something that, my experience in all these years of zoning is, we could sit around here till the cows come home and think we've finally got the perfect definitions and the perfect conditions and additional standards and all that, and six months later, somebody's going to apply for something and say, I want to do this. And we're, and whoever was there writing it, and I feel that way when I see some of this stuff. Oh, I didn't, never thought of that. And so I think you ought to, I mean, there's some utility to, to leave in those things to the, the, the general standards and conditions that are in the ordinance, that on any permit, the, the, the board of supervisors or the, uh, board of zoning appeals, as the case may be, has the discretion to look into that and ask that question and fashion the conditions that are appropriate, based on the road and based on the neighbors and, you know, I mean, because some could be out in the middle of nowhere and nobody cares.
I, I'm in agreement with you. I guess I just, so, the, the, we, we got to, if we're going to have a motion, it's got to be on what it includes, not, and, and it can't be on what's wrong with what I proposed.
Okay, well.
Some other language, if you want to get some other language, I'm, I'm open to the suggestion, I'm just trying to explain why I wrote it the way I wrote it.
Well, could we, could we, could I suggest that the word events kind of bothers me?
No, no difference.
Because, I mean, you could have a, let's come out and shoot shotguns, you know, or whatever. Can we just say, could not accommodate, uh, um, more than twice the number of permitted resident guests for, uh, you know, and somehow, I don't know how to word it exactly, it just came to my mind, but can we get rid of events and just say, you know?
You could call them visitors or something else, you know?
Visitors, but not, not allowing, when you start seeing events, I mean, now we're talking about weddings, parties, uh, you know, who knows what, you know?
Higher.
It's all, it's all based on the, the number of people. But I, I take your point, but, you know, when you start using these words to have regulatory significance, every one of them gets loaded. So, you know, again, I'm, I, I hear you, but give us another word, give us an alternative, otherwise we're just spinning our wheel.
Okay, well.
Uh, another point I don't know.
Well, wait a minute, let's finish this point before we get to another point. So, I'm back on my chart of the original May Amendments. And that's the language I want to use. Of course. Any building or portion thereof containing sleeping, well, we're going to use your transient lodging definition, and then tourist home is a transient lodging facility that accommodates not more than 10 persons, not more than five rooms, lodging units. One is rented in its entirety, not by lodging unit, to a single party of guests. Uh, sorry. Two does not have a resident manager. Three serves no meals, period. Leave off four.
Can you repeat that, so I can read it?
What?
Can you repeat that and I'll type it out?
It's, it's Gary, it's Gary's, it's on Gary's sheet. Where's yours?
Okay, bed and breakfast is definitely.
No, it's a tourist home. We're going to use, we're going to use the transient lodging facility. I'm going to use that. And then right after that's going to be tourist home, just as it is, except we're going to put it, move the end to before number three, and we're going to leave out about events.
We're going to leave out four?
We're going to leave out four in its entirety, we're going to strike that to the end of there. And bed and breakfast, same thing. Transient lodging may be rented by individual lodging unit to different parties of guests. May have a resident manager. The only thing I would say may or may, I don't know why we have to say that at all, may or may not have a resident.
Well, I, I considered saying shall have a resident manager, because, but.
Why, why do we?
Well, because it's another, it's another party, and again, it's.
All right, so you're going to change may to shall, fine. Shall have a resident manager. Three may serve meals, all meals or just breakfast?
Well, again, traditionally, the, the convention, and I don't know if this was ever written anywhere, but the convention was, you, you could generally serve meals or could serve meals up to the number that you could serve, like what was different about breakfast and dinner? But, but I think the key is, it's up, it's to the, serve meals, but you're only serving them to the people who are staying there.
It's, okay, fine.
If you want to cut it off there, I think that's.
And strike four, get rid of the events part, off of that.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Does that pick up every other change related to those in the May Amendment chart?
Right, because he put it all into transient.
It's within 170-8.
Correct. We're going to leave everything else alone, except when we get to, uh, 166K subsections one, three, four, and six.
Same here or from the other?
There's, there, there, well, 66K four, we don't, well, we, no, we, the, the commission already voted on, on this, well, let's take them one at a time. 66K one. Uh, I'm not sure why, but that sort of repeats it. A use may provide accommodations for up to 10, so it fixes the 10 versus 12 thing. Five rooms classified as lodging units and so forth. That's K one. I don't, I think we've already been around that dog track enough times, so there's no big change there, it's just to conform it to the definition. Subsection three, shall not be more than two stories and have the appearance of a single-family rez. I don't think that's too controversial. It used to say, shall have the exterior appearance of a single-family rez. Whoa, what does that mean? In this day and age, what does that mean? I don't know. So it's to make it more precise, no more than two stories. And, and really, most, about 99% of them are things that are already there. I, I, we have one, which is the Millers, is the first one that I can remember where anybody asked for a permit to have a, a special use permit to have a, either a tourist home or a bed and breakfast that wasn't built yet. Every other one has already been built.
Well, and again, we're not talking about, just to be clear, this would prevented my house from being a bed and breakfast because it's four stories. Is that what you're intending to do here?
No.
Take these old houses out? I mean, because that's what you've just done.
Unless it's an existing structure, why you want to put that in there? I think residence can be three stories above green.
Yeah, if you have a basement and two, two stories.
I don't know. I think it ought to be three stories above green. The buildings, let, how about instead of the building so used, make it any buildings to be constructed? So it's clear that it doesn't apply to existing structures. Everybody okay with that? Good. Got that?
Yeah.
Good, okay. 170-66K four. This is all tourist homes, bed and breakfast, and boarding houses.
So this is where I would, I would draw a distinction between tourist homes and bed and breakfast, and I would allow, have this for the more intensive bed and breakfast.
This should be, this would get, this should just, we, here we're going to strike tourist homes, because tourist homes is pretty much existing stuff, so it's only bed and breakfast and boarding houses.
Well, boarding houses, I would have gotten rid of boarding houses, but I guess it's still there because we didn't get rid of it.
We, we had a, we had a big discussion on this, uh, it was a, for a very long time, and I think it should apply to all of them. We, we, he, uh, we had a long knockout, drag-out fight over this when we addressed this a couple of years ago. And we, and it was a contentious vote and came up to 1020. And, and tourist homes was one of the primary reasons, principal reason that, for the 10 and 20 acres.
What do you say to the people who say it's no more intensive than, it's probably less intensive than a single-family house? What's the answer to that?
Well, tourist home, you got a tourist home on a private road or on a small piece of land, you got a tourist home on a small piece of land, every family that comes in there, they have to learn the ropes again on, on, on what the standards of the neighborhood is, uh, what the neighbors are used to. Uh, if you, if you got a larger piece of land, they're less likely to infringe upon the neighbors versus a smaller piece of land. It's easier to stay on a bigger piece than, than a smaller piece, whether it's walking, dogs, playing games, or whatever. And, um, I think it gives the, the tourist homes more integrity and makes them more attractive than if they're on a small lot, and less likely that you're going to have people trying to buy small houses and make tourist homes out of them as a business.
Right. Well, the other side of it is, don't forget that in the last column, the change is, and the, right now, it just says 10 and eight, 20 acres, period. That's what's in the ordinance now. What, this part that's in italics actually was the part that Mr. Goff said that wasn't properly changed when they changed it to two and five or whatever they changed it to, so it's really, it really is, that's what it says. Anyway, what has been added is provided, however the BZI can waive the minimum acreage requirement if the property has frontage on a paved public road that is part of the state or a primary or secondary system. Remember, that was Mr. Henry's change, he fixed that up. So you're not going to have any private, if, if it's on a private lane or a right-of-way or anything like that, you can't waive the minimum acreage. So, all right, so with that said, I'm, I'm agreed, I'm, I agree with Mr. Henry to leave it alone, I mean, leave it the way, what's written. Anybody else have any thoughts, one way or the other? I mean, that gives the BZA the discretion to waive it under certain limited circumstances.
Where all the problems and complaints come from.
What, the BZA or the?
Well, for the neighbors, it's always if it's on a small lane, private lane, usually there's no road maintenance agreement in place.
Right.
But this is getting at the acreage, I think we do need to deal with the road issue, that's coming up, that's six.
That's coming up, right, okay. So everybody good with that now? We're going to leave that the way it is in this table.
Deluctantly, I'll accept it, but I don't like it.
You don't know.
Never have.
Okay. All right. 170-66K six. This is the road thing, which we've been round and round about, and hopefully this is going to be the last time, still the public hearing anyway. Private roads and, or public roads other than primary, state, and secondary road service tourism shall meet the standards for type two roads as set forth in the subdivision ordinance. I'm not going to read it all. That is a, that is, if it's, if it doesn't have to be paved, but it's got to be the minimum width and so forth and so on, so that, and, and the biggest thing here is, again, the right-of-way is irrelevant, it's what is the road that's built has to meet the subdivision standards.
And, and I would propose that that apply to bed and breakfast, but not tourist home. Otherwise, there's no difference, and we wasted all of our time to differentiate.
Well, you can fix that in the, when the, when the general thing comes up. Anybody else?
What did you mean, I thought?
I'm sorry, what did, what did you say, Gary?
I said that the whole, to me, the whole point of originally differentiating B and Bs and tourist homes is that it's, the, the tourist home with, you know, small number of people rented to one person or one party is not such a big deal when it's on one of these private lanes. B and Bs, like the Harmony Manor or the more intensive uses, when they are, are more of a problem. So my whole point in differentiating those rather than grouping them together was because I think there, it is more reasonable to have a tourist home on a, you know, more of a private road than it is to have a bed and breakfast on a private road.
You know, the only distinction is the meals.
And the, and the, and the way people are coming and going, and the intensity of it, but because of the multiple, multiple parties.
Okay, well.
But I, I would just say.
What you're saying, but I don't agree.
Okay, well, then, I'm not sure why we differentiated them in the beginning with, but.
I, I guess I think that requiring a type two road, that's pretty, it's a pretty heavy road. You know, it's such, it's certain width, it's a certain width that has a nine-inch gravel base, as I recall, and they stand corrected, uh, ditches, uh, it's a pretty, uh, I mean, that's a, that's like the state builds.
We won't have many tourist homes if we require that.
Well, like, if they're on a public road, they're, if they're on a, if they're on a state, secondary, or primary highway, they're good. It's only going to restrict easements in private lanes, which is very, very, we, we just don't have that many.
Well, one possible consequence is now if somebody would feel they have to widen a road, a country lane, if they wanted a tourist home there, which may not be desirable.
It's a private lane, I mean, if they, if they wanted, if they can't meet the standards, they can, I mean, you know, that's part of zoning. If you don't meet the standards, you don't meet the standards.
Well, I guess we really have to.
And we are, we are, to me, we, the purpose of all of this is to protect the neighbors. And, you know, we can bring up one example after another, but the, the one, everybody knows which one I'm talking about. There's a private lane that has a, I guess you'd call it, it's paved with potholes, but, uh, anyway, it was paved.
Are the potholes the standard?
No, there, but there isn't a standard. So all it says is it's, it's on a 50-foot right-of-way, and PS, that's on a 30-foot right-of-way. And so the road itself is one-car width wide, I mean, there's not enough room for two cars to pass on it, and that's the problem. Because I, I don't, well, I don't know how many of you live on a private type of lane, but I, where I live, I do, and.
I do.
And the people who, the people above me are, are involved with some, uh, you know, cultural type things and whatever in the county, and so from time to time, they either have a lot of guests or they have people that are coming to meetings at their house, and every, and, and I mean, my road is such that, like, you can't go off into the grass, you can go off into the creek, over the cliff, there's nowhere to go. And they come up, when the people that don't live there come up that lane, they stop, they see another car coming and they stop. And so, and then they just sit and wait for you to back. And so, and then they just sit and wait for you to back all, because you know where the turnouts are, so you have to back all the way up to the next truck, because you just get tired, as you can see, they're just going to sit there. And it's a pain in the neck. And that's, and, and that is not fair to, to impose on somebody. It's just like what Al said. It's not fair to impose that on the neighbors.
Were you, are you intending that, that things like that would be included in this?
Well, that, that, my, my road where I live would not, would not meet that standard. Because it doesn't have, it's not wide enough, and it doesn't, it, it doesn't have a traveled way that is twelve feet wide. It doesn't have any ditches, unless you count the creek as a ditch.
I'm saying, is this only, is this only going to apply to tourist homes?
No, it's going to apply to bed and breakfast, tourist homes, and boarding houses. All the transient houses. You can't, if you, if you don't have a road that either is on a state or public highway in this, that's maintained by VDOT, or, and if you're, in other words, if you're on a private lane that is not state-maintained, you've got to, the road's got to meet those standards, or you can't have that use, period.
It's, it's not that they can't have it, they can bring the road up to standard.
Well, okay, well, all right, if they can, if they maybe they, if they can. But if you're the second or third property back, that means you have to go and, I mean, some places you could, because you've got the easement. And it, so there's plenty of places where that you have a fifty-foot right-of-way, but you only have a ten-foot, or a five, an eight-foot road built on it, or you only have two tire tracks built on it. So, yeah, if, if you've got the space, I mean, my, in my particular circumstance, because of the topography and the creek, there, there isn't any place to put it, so it's out, which is fine. But if you've got the space, and you want to build the road up to those standards, then you can do it.
Well, look at it from a standpoint of a public policy. Uh, uh, one, one of the things that I've seen that, that it seems that people come in here to, to stay, and come to the county, the thing that they're scared of is gravel, gravel roads. Uh, down on Battle Run, I, I've seen people come from out of the area down that road, and, and their half of the road is right in the middle, and they're so afraid to go to the right or left. And they're just not accustomed to, to anything other than asphalt and, and big roads. And uh, if they're on a private road too, the likely, if they come from this transient housing, whatever it is, uh, it's more likely, now, I grant you, it's probably a small percentage increase, of foreign rescue having to use that road if you got transient housing. Somebody, kid getting hurt, or somebody else getting hurt, or whatever. And uh, I think it's just good policy to have good roads. If you're going to have these kind of uses on private roads. And uh, and I think that's one of the biggest things. Plus, of course, these people coming on these private roads just don't know how to drive them. And uh, it makes sense to have a good road if you're going to have transient housing.
I take Al's point, and I, and I think it's a good one. The uh, I guess, uh, different point, and I'm not sure it's valid, but it's, I'll bring it up, is that uh, I think that we do have to make a decision if we're encouraging tourism or not in the county. And we seem to be sort of trying to discourage tourism, and I know we want agriculture, but as you yourself mentioned the other day, how many farms are there? And the answer was maybe five large farms left in the county. So, you know, we're, are we protecting, what are we trying to do? And, and, you know, I mean, we have a county that's got to go, it's going to, it's going to change. We don't want it to change much. Uh, I just want to be careful that we don't make it so impossible.
Well, okay, I, I take your point, and the answer to it is right in the complaint, what we wrote, that the, the need, the tourism has got a condition on it, and that's that it doesn't interfere with the other primary uses.
I, I don't know if you could be more specific, how are we discouraging tourism?
Yeah, I, we're just saying that it should be safe.
Well, I think that, you know, we're, we're, you know, like, a lot of people who don't have ten acres can't have a, a B and B, you know? Uh, people who don't live on a good enough road can't have a B and B. Uh, you know, there's, it's like, I'm not, I'm not necessarily against it, I'm just bringing up a point that I, I think we want to be careful that we don't go so far that we, that we limit, you know, the ability for tourism to, because of the, the economy in this county is going to need it at some point.
But those are, um, light, I'll grant you that they're light, but they're commercial uses, you know, primary, real residents. And, and I think that, we had one that, that I think got approved by the BZI. If they brought it up to standard, they never did. It was, I don't know why in the world they ever approved it to start with.
You know, you were, you came, you came late, but we, earlier on, and I hate to keep on bringing it up, but it, it's really relevant, because I think it shows what the mood of the county is. The, the thing that was coming up for public hearing that we had a preliminary review of at the previous session of this meeting, as I said, they're going to have fourteen people that's seven cars, like, what'd they say? A couple, four or five times a month, a year? And look at the opposition in the community, look at all the letters and cards and letters on four hundred and sixty acres.
Uh, you're exaggerating.
On a state road, I'm, I'm.
Over thirty-six, it's over four hundred acres, so.
Yeah, on a state road.
On a state road, it's not even, and there, and there, uh.
Their driveway is probably better than the state road.
And there, and there, the nearest building to the state road is a half a mile up their driveway. Well, and I, I'm not saying who's right or who's wrong, or whether it's, what the outcome of it's going to be. I'm just saying, look at how much the neighbor, the, you know, the, the, how, how much opposition there was, or is going to be from the neighbors, uh, because of something like that. So, that is, that is not, that's not going to be every weekend, or on a regular basis, that's going to be a few times a year. And the other side of that, as a, as a, in contrast to a B and B or a tourist home, is they were very specific that, uh, and I was joking around with somebody and said, maybe we should make that a condition of the permit, that, they said the people are going to stay on the farm. Once they get there on Friday, they're going to stay until Sunday. They're going to have all their meals and all their little activities about sustainable farming and all that, on the place. They're not going to be coming and going, they're not going to be hiking all rag, and then coming back, and then going to the inn, or some other restaurant, and then coming back. They're all going to go there, and they're going to stay the whole time. And, you know, maybe we should consider making a condition that they have a gate, and when they all get in there, they go out. So they can't get out.
A door was rugged, but.
That's, that is a little, that is enough.
Yeah, but, you know, again, if you think about when the hunt meets on that road, which is probably quite often, there's, there's trucks and trailers and all kinds of things coming down, all pretty much at the same time, leaving all at the same time.
That's different, it's got horses involved.
Well, yeah, you've got horses involved, you've got something better. Then you've got, then you've got people who have their own dinner parties, you know, eight, ten, twelve, fifteen people, whatever. I mean, there's a lot of traffic on that road that's not really accounted for, and uh, I just think it's, I think we have to be careful not to go overboard.
Yeah, could, could I make a comment here, just to Mr. Kohler, to your point about, you know, are we encouraging or discouraging? I, I've been thinking back through the tourist homes that we've approved recently, and I think there were, there were pretty, there were a few that were on private gravel roads, and we've, you know, we've almost made, we've almost suggested if we tighten this down, that it's practically a by-rite use. I do think, although I can't definitively cite any examples, I have a feeling that some of the ones we've approved recently wouldn't, wouldn't have been approved if we had this standard. So in that sense, it is cranking down.
I, I can only think of one, on Christmas Tree Lane. That that didn't meet the minimum acreage.
Well, there was the one, uh.
But I think Christmas Tree Lane does meet the subdivision standard, Greg.
Well, I'm thinking of the one up by Flint Hill.
Oh, on the, off the Fodderstock Road? Yeah, that was the disaster.
And then there was one on.
One next to Chris Burner.
Well, no, I'm thinking of the one off of uh, off of five twenty-two, up that private road by, by Flint Hill. It's the, it was a.
Gritten Lane?
Yeah, I think that is it.
Right.
So I think there have been a few that, and I don't know for sure if those roads would have met the standards, but again, to me, the lighter touch of only the number of people who can stay there and no events for tourist homes allowed that to, you know, be okay on these second roads. I'm totally okay with this for B and B, but I think it's a little bit, it's, it's tightening it up in a way on tourist homes to a degree that I do think is restrictive. I'm not, I'm not arguing strenuously that we don't do it, but I do think it is a, it is a, is a ratcheting.
I think it's the last comment I would have, is, I, I, I think you're going to have, most of the time, unless you've got a really closely-knit community, you're going to have opposition on, on a private road to people having tourist homes, or bread and breakfasts, or anything. And if I lived on a private road, and we had a road maintenance agreement, and, you know, and I was paying five hundred dollars a year, I would have a problem with somebody having a commercial activity on that road, that they were using that road every day, and wearing it out, and I was contributing money to keep it maintained, and they were basically doing their business at my expense. And um, and that kind of situation extends off of the property of everyone within these developments, that would be a concern.
And, well, if somebody lived there, they'd be using it every day too.
More intensely.
More intensely, probably, yeah. You'd be asking me coming in, Fed Ex would be coming in and out, you know, the gas delivery guy, all that stuff, you know?
Gas delivery guys coming out.
He's coming anyway, but.
These people that are renting these houses out, they're not living there, and they, they got extra nights, and that's why they're renting them out.
Right.
So in number four, we allow waiver, basically the BZI can waive it, we can, is there any way we can write up some sort of waiver into this that, on a case?
Well, that's the problem, uh, Mary Catherine, they, they uh, they, the, the one, the, 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 the place that started this whole debate, and, and, and resulted in this change, like I said, went to court, and the word "should" was interpreted as, as like it's a suggestion, not a requirement. And that, and that's, that's the main thing, and so the question is, and, and PS, that was on a thirty-foot right-of-way, which is, again, a meaningless standard. So what standard do you want to have? No, if you want to, I mean, the whole purpose of it, that's always been in the ordinance, is a fifty-foot right-of-way. So there's plenty of places that don't have a fifty-foot right-of-way, and they said, oh, well, it should have a fifty-foot right-of-way, so they allowed, allowed it, and, and it's just a recipe for disaster. And if you put, if you put, uh, I mean, uh, uh, if you put in a way to waive it, guess what? It's going to get waived. They're going to come in, and they're going to start crying their crocodile tears, just like what I said on my, on my thing, they say, oh, well, we can't, we can't build it to that standard, because there's not enough room, because there's a big rock outcropping on one side, and there's a creek on the other side, and we're really nice people, and our kids are on the basketball team, and we go to church, or whatever they usually say, and all the people from their church show up, or all the people from the basketball team show up, and say, yeah, the guy had a great layup, you know, or a great hook shot. And so, give them the permit, and, you know, that's the way it goes. And so you're, when you, if you open, open it up, and you let the camel get his nose under the tent, you're not, you might as well leave it out.
We need to learn something from that court case we have, and, and the county spent hours and hours and hours in that case. It went on for months.
Years.
Yeah, and we should, we should learn something from that, and try to avoid that again.
Hundred percent agree for bed and breakfast.
I do agree with the fifty-foot right-of-way, yeah.
But, okay, what, but the fifty-foot right-of-way doesn't mean anything, though.
I, I think this is a very good improvement for bed and breakfast. To me, the only question is, does it also, should it also apply to tourist homes? That, to me, is the only distinction. I totally support this for bed and breakfast. I think it's a long time, and it's a great improvement over the fifty-foot right-of-way.
Let's take a vote. I think everybody knows.
I, I like, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
It's always important in these things here, we, we, we sit here above it and look back and, and reflect, and we think we, we know the reality of the situation, but we don't have any scars, or wounds, or, or memories from this. And uh, there's one person in here, I would just like to have their opinion. And Yoko, what do you think?
I think, uh.
Yes or no, tourist homes?
Pardon?
Just on the tourist homes, yes or no?
For tourist homes?
Yeah.
Definitely fifty-foot right-of-way and uh, uh, road.
Standards?
Not for two cars to pass.
Road standards.
Road standards, yes.
There's somebody that has scars from all this.
Right. All right, let's go, go down. All right, so, Mr. Light wants to take out the tourist homes, so let's make that a motion.
No, it, it is, it's a bit of hair splitting.
I understand, just make it a motion and somebody.
That we, that we have, have the standards, that we, that remove tourist homes from this as drafted.
Just so we can vote on it, I'll second it. All right, now, we've had, any further discussion?
So what if I mean about the fifty, fifty feet in width?
Fifty feet is coming out. We're all, he's going to leave the, they leave the stuff in, in the last column exactly as it is. It's just, he wants to take tourist homes out of the, of the uses to which that standard would apply. That's the motion. So, Mr.
So we just say serving, serving bed and breakfast. Private roads or public roads?
And boarding houses.
It doesn't say boarding houses, does it?
Yeah.
Nah, mine.
Okay.
And it shouldn't. Boarding houses, we need to get rid of boarding houses, they don't exist, and they're just confusing, but they, at least it's not here.
All right, great, it's in what I got, but all right, great, so that's the motion. It's, it would not apply to tourist homes. Mr. Light?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Nay.
Conick?
Nay.
Fraser?
Nay.
Kohler?
Aye.
Aye?
All right, Mary Catherine? Shane?
Shulon?
Nay.
All right, the nays have it, so, it's going to stay the way it is. Got it, Michelle? Thank you.
Oh, we haven't voted on the overall language, right, yet here.
Yeah, I said, we just did.
Well, I'm, yeah, but, I mean, I'm just saying, Michelle's going to put together this overall language.
Well, it's already in there, that way.
Wait, wait, well, we're talking about the definitions, aren't we?
No, now we're in the, we're in one sixty-six K. All right, seven, additional standards. They ha, they have to, they'll be conditioned on the applicant obtaining any license as may be required, required, blah, 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 by whatever that is.
Yeah, I, I had a question about this, does that mean they have to get it?
That, that means if it's approved by the BZI, or the, the, whoever, whatever board approves it, be, before Michelle can give them their, uh, per, their actual zoning permit, they have to produce the evidence. In other words, we're not going to, because otherwise.
Not before we approve it?
No, not before we approve it, because why would they have to go to that trouble if they don't get the, if they don't get the conditional thing?
That was my concern for raising it, I'm not sure how that.
So it's conditioned on the applicant furnishing that, so once we recommend, and the board.
Okay, so that's issuance.
One condition, it would be an automatic condition, they have to bring in their permit from the Department of Health, or whoever it is, that they meet all the health standards, and if they already have it, great. If they don't, they have to go get it.
So it's, it, maybe we could say issuance by the zoning administrator, I, I guess I'm just going to.
Oh, it's the issuance by the Health Department. The license as may be required by twelve VAC four thirty-one dash one eighty comes from the Health Department.
I understand, but it's the beginning part, issuance of a special permit. The, the confusing part about this is, I could see us arguing about this, because we're not issuing it. We're, we're recommending it for approval.
Right.
And, and I'm just suggesting that we, it, we could avoid that future confusion if we say issuance by the zoning administrator of a special use permit, so it's not, it's clear that we don't need to see it ahead of time.
Right. Okay, fine, because that's the process. The board approves the permit, and then the zoning administrator signs the permit, and gives, actually gives them a piece of paper that says special use permit.
I don't think it makes a difference, but to me, it makes it clear.
Okay, that's fine, I don't have a problem with it. Issuance by the ZA of a special permit, okay? Done with that one? Sixty-six K eight. Conditioned obtaining a VDOT entrance permit, as required by blah, 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 the road design thing, and so forth. Usually, they bring that in before it's even voted on, so. Any problems, any, good with that? All right, additional standards for all tourist homes, bed and breakfast, boarding houses. All I did there was change it to houses, because it said everywhere boarding homes, and there's no such thing as a boarding home. Anyway, the BZI board may, blah, 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 and, and these are the additional, uh, things. Anyway, the BZA board may, blah, 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 and, and these are the additional things that they can require. Really, they could do this anyway.
That's what I was gonna say.
This is stuff that came out of the state, the state legislation and never got passed.
But Mike, one concern, and I'm sorry to belabor this again, but if, if we articulate what these can be, really, we have a general standard that says we can put any kind of condition to ensure the harmonious stuff. So my concern about articulating what those things are is that it might inadvertently be interpreted as restricting.
All right, I'll tell you why. It's here. There's a couple of reasons. And if you want to put, may impose, it says, may, let's put after conditions, including but not limited to.
Okay.
Well, it does say that. Sorry, it's down at the bottom. I already did it. Good. The reason, for example, the BZA's been doing this and so has the commission been recommending it repeatedly, like the stuff about.
Got you.
Fire detection and carbon monoxide alarms and insurance and providing them with emergency numbers. You know, those things are really not in there. And, and if you look at the general conditions, they're, things like that are really not zoning things, like emergency numbers. Why is that a zoning thing? I mean, is that, that affects the people that are there and the owner, not the neighbors. So, and not the land use, like the land use is the land use. If they have emergency numbers, they don't have emergency numbers. That doesn't affect it. So it's, it's really a way, because the BZA has been, especially since Ron McCalla got on, since he used to be a fireman, all these requirements that I kept saying, what's the basis for doing that? I mean, you know, that doesn't affect the traffic when they have fires thing, which is if they rent a place and it burns down and they, and the, and the owner's liable, why is that our problem?
I thought that it was, I thought we did this because it was, we didn't want somebody to come back and say, you shouldn't have given this permit to this place because it wasn't properly, you know, we weren't properly protecting you.
That, that may be a thing. That may, and that may be a thing to promote tourism, that if we, like, allow shoddy places to be rented out for these purposes, it might be a bad reflection on the county and I don't disagree with that. I'm just saying it's not, well, hasn't, it's not in the ordinance anywhere.
But it's probably in a building code and it should be enforced by the building official.
Well, not the emergency numbers and not the insurance.
No, but the fire extinguishers and fire.
I agree. But anyway.
I'm okay with it. This, this is all still trying to argue.
It's just, it's just so that there's some basis for what they have been in fact doing.
Um, so number A.
What? A?
Yeah.
Why?
Because if somebody's broken a door from 6:00, I don't think it's a problem.
Well, don't you think they're already there with their broken?
Yeah.
No, we don't.
Only the first one.
They have to be between 8:00 and 12:00 a.m. They have to be by noon.
That's good. 12:00 a.m., midnight or noon?
12:00 p.m. is noon.
Okay.
Been there for 16 hours. That's more than enough.
Right, same. If they haven't accomplished the desired purpose by then, you know, they should just be, they, they're probably gonna get thrown out anyway.
Yeah, she wants to know.
All right. There's a headline story. All right. Uh, so, so we're gonna leave that in?
That's fine.
Okay.
I'm okay with it.
It's include, they may, they may impose it. They don't have to.
So D needs to get, you gotta get rid of that, yeah, item D, you gotta get rid of that non-owner operator stuff.
Yeah, strike D. Exactly right. Good catch. Because we're not distinguishing between owner operate anymore. What?
The liability insurance.
Well, that was in the state law and so, I mean, again, they may impose it.
All right.
They haven't been, they certainly haven't been doing it on a, on a regular basis. Frankly, again, that's not something that I particularly have a concern about. I mean, if that's the owner's problem, if they don't get the liability insurance, why do we care? But again, it's this argument that, oh, well, why did you let them do it?
Well, let them do it. We gave them the permit. So stick it in there. What's wrong with leaving it in there?
So would we want to here address, we kind of dealt with this a little bit under A, but earlier we talked about whether if someone comes in and wants to talk about having other, you know, other people coming there. Do we want to say, if A is still in, maybe we should add the number of guests of lodgers is also potentially a, a limited.
That accomplished by B?
No. Limited, though, that's just the lodgers.
B, the maximum number of adults permitted at any one time shall not exceed twice the number of lodging units.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It is.
You have to have a threesome, right?
Limited lodges? Looks like it's covered there.
Okay, why don't we make A, reasonable hours, just say guests of lodgers shall be allowed only between, reasonable hours or something.
Which reasonable to one person is not reasonable to another.
Or we could say, we could impose limits on the times that hours are visited. We could just identify that as something that can be restricted rather than say what exactly that restriction would be.
All right, so you want to strike the and put certain hours and strike the of 8:00 a.m. and 12:00. Guests of lodgers shall be allowed only between certain hours. Good. In C, strike the word limited. I don't know how that got in.
Am I reading B wrong, though?
I don't know. How are you reading it?
Is lodging units?
In other words, you can't have more than two people in a room. It's basically how you translate that.
Oh, okay.
I thought we were talking about the guests.
Yeah, we were, but you're right.
Oh, that's permitted at any one time, shall not exceed twice the number of lodging units. Say if you have five lodging units, you can only have two, 10 people.
Yeah, so we're not allowing any visitors beyond the number that can spend the night, other than children, basically.
Right. All right, in C, strike the word limited. It should just say lodgers shall be notified of, which we don't have any, so if you want to strike that, you can strike that. I, I propose to strike because that was part of the state law. We don't, we don't, there's no way to enforce that.
Why don't you make it 10,000?
10,000 what?
Violation, per violation.
Can't because the state law already limits it. So strike I, a subsection I. All right, we're down to the last one, I think. Yippee. 120, 170, 129, filing of applications. That's already been approved a billion times. They have to, they have to have the site plan submitted. They have to make sure there's, all their real estate taxes are paid and that's already in the state code, so this really just conforms into that.
I'm sorry, which are we under?
The very last, well, I'm on one.
You're in your table.
I'm on my table. Okay, we're, uh, it's 170-129, which.
70-.
Which is on page, uh, come on, help me.
190?
One, what'd I say? 170, 129?
170, 129 is, who's 190?
190? Good man. You must have a computer. Oh. Earthborne vibration. Hmm. Maybe you should put that in the B&amp;B thing. Where? 190? Where does it say that? 100, page 190?
Well, that's what's got in here as a page number.
No, that's in the, something else. All right. Yeah, it's under two, it's 205 of this marked up with italics and so forth. Filing of applications. One, I'm sorry, 205.
It only goes up to 201.
Well, you don't have the one that's in markup version, so I don't know. Can you put it up there on the screen, please?
I think it's up to 204.
The one from.
The one that she sent around today. So, great. Can we get a motion to advertise this to public hearing at our next meeting?
We can advertise, but you would, there are a couple of things still missing out here that.
Well, we can fix them at or after the public hearing. I mean, I think we're substantial there. I mean, if you want to.
I'd like, what are they? I'd like to know what.
So I would say, pull them up here.
You better do it before the public hearing, because.
So on the streets thing, I thought we'd taken out, we were just gonna put in this chart, the.
That's right. The streets, we're not changing the definition. We're just gonna put in the chart, right? And I thought that's what we did.
That's not what we did in the.
Why are you shaking your head? No, what?
The chart is, is just gonna say, we're gonna add private roads to the setback with the minimum front yards in section 170-37.
Okay, so that language is still there.
Just a sec.
Still leaving in the, there's.
Minimum front yards. It's on page 59. Minimum front yards measured from center of street or nearest lane of 211. Why, 211's fixed, singled out. So we're, we're gonna put, uh, private and all other roads.
You're gonna take out the definition, you're gonna take out the changes in 170-8 and just put it over?
We're, yeah, we gave up on that altogether. We're gonna leave it the way it is.
Okay.
There's not gonna be any.
Got it?
I mean, we're gonna make the change.
Anything that was discontinued from state maintenance is now a private street subject to that.
Correct. So it's gonna be private and all other roads.
And.
In the chart.
What did we, I'm sorry, when we're ready to move on to this, the other one that I was wanting to address, what do we end up doing on the efficiency and family?
We combined them.
Did we? Because it wasn't in here the last time, so that language is in here now.
Isn't here now, is it?
No, it's not.
What?
Yes, it is.
Where, where is that?
Thank you for coming, Chris.
It's on page. And then Michelle could remind us of page she took. She just combined it with.
It's under.
Uh, we're talking.
Family apartments and efficiency. We're gonna get rid of family apartments. And we're gonna, and the, and the efficiency apartment, we're gonna increase to what it was in family apartments, 1200.
170-70.
Are we limiting those to family or not?
No, we're taking out the family. There're not gonna be any more family. Everything's gonna be in efficiency.
Good, because.
No requirement of who lives there for two years and blah, blah, blah.
So the definition of family apartment is still in here?
All right, well, it should be stricken.
And I don't see a definition of efficiency apartment in the definition section, so that's something else. Maybe it's under apartment slash efficiency? I don't know. It's not under E's.
All right, family apartment is gonna be stricken. And what happened to efficiency apartment?
And we need to delete efficiency apartments from 170-36.
No, efficiency's staying in.
Just redefining it, but I don't see a definition in the definition section. Right. We're getting rid of family.
We're deleting it. Well, I think we're okay because it's in the, what'd you say, one, it's in the standards. So we don't, I mean, efficiency apartment is efficiency apartment.
Yeah, I'm saying family apartment.
Family apartments is out. What, what page is it on?
Uh, it's in the definitions under.
No, the definition, family apartment is out.
Okay.
It's in the, uh, special standards is what's gonna be changed.
Oh, okay.
170-36, we got taken out.
We have to make an efficiency apartment definition. Why?
An efficiency, you don't know what an efficiency apartment is? It's gonna be in the special standards. It ought to be in definition.
I think it should be an efficiency.
All right, what do you, what do you want to say? An apartment that's no larger.
Just use family apartment for the, or just change it.
It's a second, it's a second dwelling unit on a parcel that, you know.
Well, maybe I spoke too quickly.
Are we gonna have a distance from the residence in there?
So family apartment, change family to efficiency. Yeah, and then what?
I don't know if you went to 200-foot on there anymore because.
Well, now we're not talking about the definition, so. What's the definition of apartment? Right here.
Well, then you'd go to the dictionary if it's not in here. Everybody knows what an apartment is. Come on.
I'm sorry, but I'm still.
Somebody give me a page number that, that the special standards are on, because I, I don't have a computer and I can't find it. What?
170-60.
Well, 45, general standards, this 16, I'm at 50, I'm getting there. Bear with me.
Yeah, we need to take family.
Aye. 62?
Page 106.
Thanks. Maximum of 10 dogs per acre? The hell is that for a town?
Jack Russell, that's too many of them.
Revocation, 10, what'd you say?
170-62.
So what page is on?
It was right below revocation.
It's 98 on the, when I'm looking at it.
It was 106.
Category one. It's, uh, residential uses, yeah. Where? What subsection?
G has, it actually says for both family and efficiency apartments. I don't think this is quite what we want yet. Again, but why I seem to be looking, is there a later version?
Yeah, it should be, G should be additional, is strike family and it should just be for efficiency apartments.
And we should have a definition, though, it seems to me, of an efficiency apartment.
You said, there it is in G1, said shall not more than 1200 if the living space is a structure other than blah, 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 blah.
Why can't we put that in the definition section?
No access between the strike family in the fourth line, one, two, three, fourth line in the middle, it should say efficiency or just the apartment, just strike family. And the balance of the structure, maybe in the blah, 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 further exiting renovation, no such strike family again. No such apartment shall be more than 200 feet from the main residence except upon a written finding, blah, 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 blah. No, 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 not to detriment, oh my God. No, uh, fourth line or fifth line from the bottom, no apartment shall utilize a separate entrance to the property unless such entrance is already in existence. In no case shall accessory space be converted residential. Da, 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 da. Fine. So there's your definition. Strike G2, the way you're there. G2, the apartment may not be rented, right. That's out. G2 is eliminated, so that should be a strike through. G3 renewed. And there should be, G3 should be G2 and no more than one, start, insert efficiency apartment per separate parcel of land. Great. Those are the changes on that.
May I ask on, on that, it says in no case shall accessory space be converted to residential occupancy. What does that mean?
Like storage areas underneath the roof or back porch or.
So your basement, things like that should not be converted to.
Oh, yeah, once they got their 1200 square feet, they can.
Okay, but you can have a basement. You can have a basement or an attic, you just can't finish it off.
No, you can. It's just, like, you can't, if you've got, if you've got, like, the, we have one like that, where they have a whole bunch of space sort of under the E, some that, once you get, once you hit your 1200 square feet, you can't convert like some other storage closet for the main structure into living space for the, for the apartment.
But if you build, let's say, a family apartment.
Right.
Can it have a basement or?
As long as you don't go over 1200 square feet.
So the basement counts on the 1200. That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, living space, yeah.
A basement's not living space necessarily. That's all I'm asking.
So, yeah, it can be habitable space. That's where the, the zoning industry will figure all that out. The BZI, too, they have to submit their plans and so forth, so we'll catch all that. We'll catch it, too.
I'm just guessing, a utility basement is okay.
Not finished living space. Not if it's accessible. I mean, if you have to go outside and walk around, they've been approving it definitely, but if you can, if you can open a door and go downstairs, it's considered same dwelling.
Trying to get clear, okay. Thank you.
I, yeah, because to me, it sounds like you can't turn a garage into a, into a residential occupancy.
You can't do it legally, but they've been doing it at night.
You can do it as long as you don't have another one. As long as that's your twelve hundred.
Tell my Italian, uh, astronaut story now.
Also, why do we care if it's just an efficiency and it's no longer a family? Why do we care if it's no more than two hundred feet from the main residence?
The, the reason is so you can't, because if it's an efficiency apartment, uh, the theory is that you wanna have it close to the principal dwelling so that it's just not a separate dwelling unit.
It's somehow ancillary to the, to the main structure.
Ancillary to the main use. Because it's sort of a, what do you call? An accessory use. Okay? Tell, somebody make a motion. Oh, do you have more things?
No, I just wanna read it again, because it's got efficiency, so I thought we were looking at efficiency. I mean, it said family, so.
And did we get, I thought, did we keep the, um, wireless and.
Taking that out.
Ultimate energy, that's not in here.
That's gonna be part of.
And we know that, and, but are we sure it's not?
Totally pass the conference.
Also, um.
Seven fifty-nine. Do you wanna watch the last game of the, uh, series? Come on, I wanna get home and watch the World Series, huh? Dodgers, right? Somebody said the Dodgers could win. Yes, ma'am. Okay, but I don't know if we're gonna do that now. Well. Well, we, these weren't in there, and so, I, I mean, I don't wanna open this all up. A whole list of little nits and nats. I think you're gonna have to catch that the next time you come. Yes, ma'am. Anita.
Question, you're using the term efficiency apartment.
Right.
Now, to me, an efficiency has always been, like, basically, a one-room apartment, that everything's all in one room. That's the old, you know, that's the city version. You know, you get an efficiency in New York City and it, your kitchen, living room, and bedroom are all the same room. There's no walls.
She's right. Historically, you don't have a bedroom.
Could we call it an ancillary apartment?
Yeah, and, and the term apartment always means to me something that's still attached to something else, you know, like, a garage apartment, which is what I have.
How about ancillary residence?
What, ancillary housing?
Secondary dwelling or something like that. I, just those two words just give me a problem.
Right, we've twisted it pretty far from its standard use.
No, no, you know, making the argument, that's what they do in New York is.
No, but I'm just saying, is that's, that's what, if you look, if you look up efficiency, that's anywhere that, that's what that's saying.
It's at the country, you know. It's covered by J.J. Kilpatrick's book, you know, that's country living.
Oh, I've read it.
So, right?
I think she writes is a good point, and both efficiency and apartment do have standard definitions different than the way we're using them. What is wrong, let's not be too impatient, what is wrong with just globally substituting secondary dwelling in, for efficiency apartment?
Well, because then you get into more, there's a, there is a, there is a, uh, special use permit, which is why I asked that the other night, which the press was apparently unfamiliar with, while I was asking all those questions at our previous session about how all those buildings got to be built, because there is a provision in the ordinance already that says more than one dwelling on a lot. And so, this is somewhere between, if you do what you're suggesting, it's gonna conflict with that. I mean, if it's a dwelling, it's a dwelling.
It is a dwelling, but why don't we call it an ancillary dwelling? That's why it's small, and that's why it's supposed to be close to the main structure.
Supplementary dwelling.
And supplement, ancillary, something. Efficiency apartment is just a, that's just a historical legacy that doesn't make any sense, and if we're gonna go to the trouble of fixing this.
I don't, you know, as long as the, the restrictions and the definitions don't change, I don't have a problem.
Can we call it a, uh, ancillary dwelling?
Let's hear what Mr. Henry thinks.
What's, what's the size of the bedroom?
What?
What's the size of the bedroom?
Well, it's just all, the whole thing is twelve hundred square feet.
What's the size of the bedroom?
I don't think we'd go there.
Up there to the doorknob.
All right. It's about a building code.
So, on this, so if, so now, if somebody has an apartment, this, this says, um, it must be served by se- separate entrance. So, if somebody just has, like, wants to rent a little space in their house and put a little kitchenette in it or in the basement or something, that's not, that's not this anymore.
That is this.
Well, no, this has to be served by.
The same entrance.
No, by a separate entrance.
No, it says it shall not have a separate entrance.
That, no, this says, that's living space is in a structure.
No family apartment shall utilize a separate entrance to the property unless such entrance is already in existence.
That's what's driving.
Interests to the physical building we build. Oh, oh.
Right. If that's living space is in a structure otherwise in an other, otherwise permitted, single bedroom, that includes other accessory space, then it must be served by a separate entrance to the outside of the structure. And there can be no access connection between the family apartment and the balance of the structure.
Just the, the apartment.
According to some, with Google thing, there is such a thing as an accessory dwelling unit. It seems to be what we're, what we're, what we're talking about here.
Okay, everybody comfortable with that? Let's change it from efficiency apartment to accessory dwelling unit. A D U.
Well, wait a minute.
That'll live forever. That'd be different.
A D U.
Wait, the dwelling unit, like, dwelling unit's not bedroom. The dwelling unit.
Dwelling unit is defined, and, and it is, it would meet the definition of the dwelling unit. It's got a separate kitchen and a separate bedroom.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we don't, I wanna make sure we're not, yeah, I think that's, that's consistent. We're not using this.
Sir Michelle would be jumping in here if she had a problem. You okay with using A D U? And wants to go home and watch the Dodgers win the World Series, so, right?
Right.
It was over. All right. Somebody make a motion to have a public hearing and advertise this at our next meeting. We're catching up with one more. What, one more? Two? Going up.
Twenty dash sixty.
All right, I'll, I'll tell you what the deal on expiration is. And Mr. Curry, by the way, had some comments that we should run these by the county attorney, but he already has reviewed it, but Mr. Curry, these have been dragging around for so long, Mr. Curry wondered where he'd already done that. Uh, his comment, as I recall, on this particular thing, uh, was that, uh, basically, if somebody stops using the use at, like, at, like, it's, it's parallel to the non-conforming use, but these, if they get a permit, they're conforming uses. If they stop using it for more than whatever it says in there, one year, two years, uh, then the permit expires. Uh, and, uh, his, he had a question about whether that was illegal or not, whether that was a vested right and whether he could take it away. So, I think maybe we ought to just strike that. And what I'm gonna suggest to you, and I'll just tell you my experience, because I've been in various other counties like Luisa and Chesterfield on various things, and when they issue special use permits, they, they put a term on them, every one of them, like, five years, automatically. And that's the other way to address this problem. If you, because I think Art's issue was, if you give them a permit and you don't make a condition of it, they have to keep on doing it. They, we do have a condition that they must start building, and they must at least start the use within one year or it expires. No, it's one year they have to start it. They don't have to finish it, but they have to start it.
This says they have to finish it within two years or they're out. You get an occupancy permit.
They can always come back for an extension. So, anyway, I, I propose to strike those. And, and the property, the, uh, permit still runs with the property owner, not the property? Unless you condition it otherwise, but like I'm telling you, all, I mean, I was down there and I couldn't believe they had a thing for a dog kennel. Somebody wanted to keep, like, two or three dogs in their backyard. They give them a five-year permit and said.
How they can do that with zoning?
What?
It seems odd to, you can do that with zoning. I thought it was a vested right.
You can, because what, I, I'll tell you what the problem has been, that, that, that the BZA and, and I guess the Planning Commission was recommending those conditions. This thing about a review, and, uh, you know, when we revoke the Harmony Matter Permit, uh, that issue came up because certain things were supposed, and we, it was done quite often. We're gonna review this after a year, after two years, and I remember sometimes, well, it should be one year or two years or three years, we're gonna review it. Well, okay, you can review it to your heart's delight, but if they haven't violated any of the conditions you put on, you can't revoke it. So, what, if you, if you mean, and one time John McCarthy, as a matter of fact, I got the transcript of the Harmony Hollow uh, hearing, and he went through that and said, look, you either have to say the permits for two years, and then they have to renew it, like, uh, what'd he call it in, over at, uh, Castleton Farms, or you keep, you, you could review, you review it and then what? And then impose new conditions? That's either violating their vested rights. I mean, what if, what if Marriott came in and wanted to build a hotel, and you said, okay, well, we're gonna review it after five years? And they built a, a, you know, a million-dollar hotel or a ten-million-dollar hotel, and then five years later, the neighbors all complained, and he said, okay, now, we're, we're revoking your permit. They'd have a court case. So, you either have to limit it, you have to put a term on it, or you cannot do, you can't interfere with their vested rights. So, I agree with the county attorney proposed that we strike that one.
And the implication of that is we start putting terms on?
And, and, exactly. And in lieu of doing that, in appropriate cases, and I mean, another one that we've had, well, maybe the Planning Commission didn't have it, but the BZA had it, was Williams', uh, whatever he's doing up there, which however got approved and so forth and so on, they, they had a review of that, too. And, uh, but it doesn't mean anything. You either have to say, you have to come back and reapply, and certain uses, you know, the neighborhood may change. And that's kind of what happened on that road. It was a very sparsely, when they approved it, it was pretty, well, fairly sparsely populated. And most of the people who were all upset about it had bought there after it was already in operation, and yet they came in and wanted to somehow to change the conditions of it after the fact, and, I mean, the board could've said, well, you're gonna have to come back, but certain things may be like that.
For our purposes here, you're suggesting get rid of the stuff that's added.
Right.
Put it back the way it was.
So, just leave alone.
I'm fine with that.
Part, all of it, or just that part?
What, where, what page is this on?
Ninety, uh, ninety-six in my version, but it doesn't seem to be the same as everybody else's.
What section is it?
One seventy dash sixty. Now, three things. You say the approved, the use has to commence, it's not, it's not within a year.
Well, that was already in there.
All required licenses and certificate of occupancy has to be gotten within two years or it expires. And they have to, if they discontinue the use.
Yeah, that's the part that should come out.
Just the part of discontinuing.
Or in the event any special exception or special use permit use has lawfully been established and is discontinued for a period in excess of one year, then blah, 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 it shall automatically expire. So, that, just that part comes out. I don't know, if they, if they're issued a permit with that language to start with. I agree, if you put that in the permit.
Yeah.
And that's my argument. If you put that in every permit, but, but you'd have to put it somewhere else.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't know. I mean, you have to say that it's subject to that condition.
I think terminating without notice is onerous. I think saying subject to termination is.
Well, it's, you can't, you can only revoke. If you don't put a term on, limit on it in the beginning, then you, then they have to violate a condition.
And that's the way it should be.
So, unless you, unless you make that a condition and say, we're giving you a permit for five years, Marriott, so you're not gonna, if you don't wanna accept that.
You know, people make commitments, you know.
Right.
And, and, and make investments, commitments, and.
Sure.
You know, it's just not correct to, to pull the rug out potentially in five years just because you got some new neighbors coming in with a different attitude than what you started this business on. I just don't think that's correct.
Well, I mean, I think it should be, that's the only way to lawfully to do it. You can't, you can't revoke somebody's permit.
Well, if they're not doing anything, if they haven't done anything to deserve revocation, it's just like, you don't take somebody to court for a criminal charge unless they committed a crime.
I, I agree with you. That's all I'm saying. No, 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 now they wrap a headache.
I thought we already had, if, in here somewhere, that if there's a, uh, if they're not living up to the terms of it, then it may be revoked.
If, that's exactly right. If they're not living up to the terms of it, but, but to just have some vague condition that you, you're subject to a review after two years, and, and then what?
Well, this says.
You're either, you're either, you either have to put the conditions in, including a term limit of five years or ten years or whatever, and it expires, or you, as long as they comply with the other conditions, the hours of operation, the number of people, the, whatever the other conditions are, the other permits and licenses they have to have, you know, the fire extinguishers, whatever of condition, other conditions, if they're violating them, then you can revoke. But you, you can't just willy-nilly review it and say, well, you know, back then, we thought it was okay, but now we don't. You can't do that.
Well, this is, this is not a view. This says if, if they discontinued the use for exit, in excess of one year, then it terminates automatically. And I don't know what it means to discontinue the use.
Well, if you have a B and B and you don't, you don't have, you're gonna stop running it out. I mean, that, I mean, I'll tell you where this came from. It came from the other one on Christmas Tree Lane, where somebody got a special use permit in, like, nineteen eighty-eight or ninety, and they saw, the property had been sold, like, three different times. They hadn't been using it as a B and B for, like, fifteen years. And suddenly, the new owner discovered there was this permit that had been issued and said, oh, I'm gonna start it up as a B and B again. Meanwhile, about five other residences have been built P S on a private lane, and that was the last house on the road, so all the traffic went past them, and suddenly, I mean, and most of them were blissfully unaware that there was, that they had gotten a special use permit, so they were all mad about it.
Well, that would make sense, but what, for example, if we had something like the Millers who are gonna build their tourist home, and COVID happens, and they don't build it within a year and, you know.
Well, that's been in there for a long time. That's, and I've, my memory serves, that's part of the state code.
No, I'm talking about this automatic termination.
Well, no, we're taking that out.
Okay. All right.
We're gonna take that, the, it's just gonna be, uh.
All right.
It automatically terminates if they don't get their certificate of occupancy. That part's gonna stay. But the last part, or in the event any such special exception or special permit use has lawfully been established and is discontinued for a period in excess of one year. That's coming out. Just that part.
All right, thank you. Then, one seventy dash sixty on A, you have to take in any special permit or special exception.
These definitions really make sense.
Well, they'll be revocable on the order, the issue authority, either the BZI or the board, whenever there has been compliance.
Not been.
Not compliant with any state law or regulation, or the express terms and conditions of the special permit or special exception.
Yeah.
Um, it's, that is the term express, is there?
Yeah.
So, that would be, that would imply that if there were implied conditions, you couldn't terminate.
It was a what?
If you have implied conditions, such as you need to comply with the Constitution, to be obvious.
Constitution?
That's an implied condition. That's an implied condition, it's not express. You don't say it in terms.
What constitution?
Oh, she's just making.
I'm making it up. I'm being silly. But what if you if you what when you say it's only can be conditioned upon the, you can only revoke it on failing to comply with the express terms and conditions, then you may be taking away your ability to revoke it if they haven't met obvious, but nonetheless implied conditions.
Well, that's that's a warning to the board to be specific, which I think they have to be anyway. If you revoked a permit based on what you said years later was an implied condition, I mean, that's you're going to have, you're going to go into court, I'm telling you right now.
Well, you maybe go into court, but.
Oh, yes, you would. You violating their vested rights.
But there are certain obvious implied conditions that are going to run with a permit. They're just.
Like what? Like name one?
Like complying with the Constitution of the United States.
What is the Constitution of the United States? How do a special use or special exception zoning permit?
This is this is for constitutional law classes.
No, it's not.
If it has to be express conditions, nothing implied.
Then put in there, then put in the permit, you must comply with the Constitution of the United States.
Take out express.
Put in express.
It's got to be expressed. It absolutely has to be expressed.
Then it.
Well, well, well.
That's why, because the state the state code has been changed to add all those vested rights provisions, and that's why they put that in, because if you don't have an express condition in the permit, either an express condition or a provision of the ordinance that's there in violation of, you can't revoke their permit. No way.
And I hate to tell you, but if you say express here, then you can't, then you haven't said it has to comply with federal law or the regulations. So that's an express term rule.
Because that's in the other section, I think.
Unless unless you actually put it in the.
Well, I guess you.
It says in the other thing that I put in, whenever there has not been compliance with, and I added any applicable state law or regulation or the express terms of and conditions. So what do you want to put, the some federal law or?
I would just say out express.
All right.
Don't take out express, you can. Why don't you take this first out?
Okay. Do we need to vote on this? Anybody else want to take it out or leave it alone? What's it? Okay.
Take the votes and get move on.
All right, we're done. Now, somebody make a motion to advertise it for public hearing so Michelle can go home. And Marlena, too.
I'll make the motion.
Two?
Uh, advertise.
For the November meeting?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second? Mr. Kohler seconds, all in favor. Let's go down the table because I think we have to adopt this by rule call vote. Mr. Light?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Connick, aye. Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
Mr. Kohler?
Aye.
Miss Ishi?
I think there's some things hanging out.
Yeah, you can bring them up again next time. Mr. Shulman?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
We agreed upon some stuff.
All right, I'm going to make a very quick report and we're going to table this until some of the further discussion of it. I think I sent it around. You've all seen Mr. What's his name's Ger Gerhart's opinion letter about the COVID business, which hopefully, thankfully, is all behind us now. He agreed that if we have a standard, we could make it a standard that being concerned about getting it is a is a basis for the health exception to to the to electronic participation. So we put in what we put in. Some of you weren't at that meeting, so I just wanted to put, bring it up for a discussion. If anyone thinks we ought to go back and further amend the rules of procedure, we could do that.
I have a question.
Yes.
Did the board supervisors, have they approved a much less restrictive for their meetings?
They, I don't think that there's, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I mean, all of our, the only thing that we added is that that the the commission can require you to state what it is and show some, I think, some evidence maybe of of what the the condition is.
And that is unique to our provision that is not.
That is unique. The the.
Well, I don't know that ours, the board's is restrictive, it's just wording differently.
I think yours just says if somebody wants to participate electronically, they can.
No, I think.
No, I said they don't.
They just they just flipped to the state code. So we save some ink. Again, it's up to, it's really, I mean, anyway.
I I think that the biggest problem I have with it is that, you know, take my example where I wasn't allowed to participate, the I thought I had a pretty good reason, the I'm not representing the county as I should be by not being a label, by not being allowed to participate in votes. I think that's a problem, you know. I just don't think people should be barred from participating.
I but the but the flip side of that is there were three members that didn't want to come. Four members had to show up. If any one of those other four members had a legitimate reason to not show up, you wouldn't have had a meeting, you wouldn't have had any discussion, you wouldn't be having this discussion right now.
But that's true.
You were requiring four other members to show up. So that's what your action was doing. You were requiring four other members.
To put our lives and risk our lives for the planning.
I was requiring one member, one member not to show up going out of the company.
Well, look, here's here's what I want to say, and again, I'm just going to, this is what you've all heard before. You know, Alan Gernhardt is a very able and experienced lawyer and basically he specializes in FOIA. That's all he does, for the most part, to my knowledge. He laid out the basis for it, but again, he said it's up to each public body to adopt, and that's what the state law says. Number two, his advisory opinion is just that. It doesn't, it doesn't have the force of law. It doesn't even have the force of a of an attorney general's opinion, which the courts have recognized as something that they give some deference to. I just I just read a case just last week came out that the Supreme Court considered, I can't remember what exactly it was, but in the last week or 10 days, a court case came out where two or three different circuit courts had ruled a certain way. I think it was on this fire, the thing up in the triangle.
They said they weren't bound to.
And they said, well, these three circuit courts all ruled a certain way, and then of course, if you were arguing the case, you'd say, well, look, Your Honors, the three different circuit court judges all ruled the same way. And the Supreme Court said, well, we're not bound by that. So you had judges that ruled this. So Alan Gernhardt, bless his heart, is not a circuit court judge even. Neither is the attorney general. And so all I'm saying is it's an advisory opinion. I say the best course is to err on the side of caution because as Senator Ovechkin said, you get an opinion if somebody is unhappy with some action that was taken at one of those meetings, whether they really think that and agree with you or agree with me. I don't really have an opinion except this one. If they bring that up and say what they did by allowing that electronic participation was beyond the scope or was exceeded the authority they were granted by the statute, it invalidates the action. So if we had a public hearing at that particular meeting, we didn't. If we took a decision and made a recommendation, I don't know that that would undo that, but certain things that we do, we have to do formally with the comp plan, we certainly do, with these resolutions that we just did to have a public hearing on this, we have, that is a formal thing. It's a formal step in the amendment procedure. And if somebody was allowed to participate, or you could flip it if somebody wasn't allowed to participate and should have been allowed to participate, some person later on could bring up, well, I applied for this, that, and the other thing. And when they changed the the ordinance that time or they adopted a new comprehensive plan, they allowed somebody to participate or they disallowed somebody from participating. So the whole meeting violated FOIA and it's invalid. We're sold.
We're you're still arguing a side point. The only issue here is the the statute allows a a reasoning for the purpose of whatever the medical condition is. The only thing that you've done in our procedures that goes beyond what is necessary is to explicitly require an explanation of that, which is not otherwise required, and it's not required in the provisions of. No, it's it no, in our procedures, in our procedures it does. So that's what we're arguing here, whether our procedure should have.
Wait a minute, you're 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 misinterpreting the statute. The statute specifically says you can allow this participation, and then there's some conditions to allow it. And one of them is that the body, the public body adopts procedures, and it doesn't say what they are.
Right.
It says they adopt them. So as and he and Alan Gernhardt didn't say our procedure was illegal.
Right, and I'm not either.
If we wanted to be more lenient, we could.
Yeah, and and that's exactly what I am saying. I'm not making a legal case. Our procedure doesn't have to include it, and we included it.
It seems like you got the BZI, you got the planning commission, you got the board supervisors. How come one size doesn't fit all?
It's a good question.
You know, why can't just the county have one policy that covers everybody?
Because we chose for un-determined reasons to 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 make it more onerous, and that's a good question.
Also say that you're changing the vote, you know, there might have been a different way the vote went if you're not allowing people to participate.
Well, I could say you changed the vote by not attending the meeting in person.
I think Alan makes a good point because we, the planning commission is the only one that's different. And I, what what Mr. Gernhardt said, I think Mr. Conica's right, that we are allowed to make the kind of change we made, but we're not required to. And all I can say is since we're allowed to but not required to, it is a it it's a bad policy what we have. I'm not positive why we brought this up again. Their vote's gone already on this. I'm not sure why it keeps coming up again, but to the extent that it does, let's make clear that in any case, no matter what we do, again, you're quite right, Mr. Fraser, we have to have a forum, period. Now, if three people can't, if four people couldn't show up, you could not have a meeting. I don't care what electronic provisions you have. If you have four people show up, we have the option of allowing three more people not to show up. But but the option we've imposed now on them is that we need to, anybody who wants to participate electronically has to come to this planning commission group and explain to them their personal medical private conditions, which I think is nothing short of creepy, frankly. And I myself have absolutely.
Nothing short of wanted?
Creepy.
Creepy?
It is downright creepy to have a group of people sitting up there demanding, you know, the particulars, intimate details of people's personal.
Well, I don't think we need to see any of it.
It says we may, not saying we have.
No, we did. Mr. Chairman, could I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
I suggest that we don't deal with this for the next two months because.
Thank you.
Well, that's just we also follow whatever the board supervisor's done.
Okay, so if anybody wants to propose an amendment, you can do it. All right, next, next and last, I think last, all right. We're going to have this joint meeting on Monday at seven P M. at the elementary school. I, due to circumstances beyond my control, I'm going to request, and I'm telling you now, Mr. Vice Chairman, that I'm requesting to participate for a personal reason, which is I have to be out of town because I got some construction going on and and I have to be there.
Is this personal or is this?
Personal.
Where are you going?
What?
Where are you going?
Penn McIsland, Delaware.
What are you constructing?
Well, I'm actually tearing something down.
You got permit there?
In addition to, so that I can rebuild my house. And the guy, the guy is coming, and that's the only day he can come, and so I have to be there.
I thought you are you are planning to participate electronically.
What's his name?
What?
What's his name?
Scott Ledna.
Okay. Can you give us his phone number so we can check on that?
Three oh two.
Not required for personal.
No, it is required. I have to explain the nature of the personal.
Wait, you want to tell, you want to tell Gary to do it?
Are you going to participate?
So I'm going to call it in by Zoom.
And there is a Zoom provision? Is that already being done? Okay, all right. Well, so I don't have anything to do with it.
Participate electronically by telephone. I won't be able to be there in person. So I don't, what?
You're not going to be on the screen, are you?
No. Now, that other guy up there, the name of that was, he got that to me guy or whatever that was. Yeah. All right. So.
Banta.
You know, I I had to be sworn into the Supreme Court of Delaware, and and they did it by Zoom, and and the clerk wrote me this thing and sent out these instructions. It says, well, you have to be dressed appropriately from the waist up. And I said, what? She said, well, it's going to be on, you know, you're going to all be on things, so you have to have a tie on and a jacket. And I said, oh, but you don't have to have pants on. And she said, well, if you don't, don't stand up. So, anyway.
That would be the one time they said, could you stand up and raise your right hand?
No, they didn't. They didn't ask you to do that. Anyway, so everybody be there, be square. I don't know what the procedure exactly is going to be. I guess that'll be up to the chairman of the board. I know the last time they had a joint meeting, they sort of went around up and down the